...make us one and two positions frequently. We frequently meet with the business manager, review projects. Things are getting done in a timely manner. I think it's working. And I would just like to, you know, have the remainder of the year and see all seasons, you know, throughout the year, you know, before we would make a proper determination to continue that plan or program or eliminate inherent mental supervisory. But I think we're making things, we're making it work. And so I would like to ask the board, I'd like to put that on the agenda to continue our program maintenance one and two through the remainder of the fiscal year.
June 30.
Through June 30. Any questions in regards to that? I'll have that added to the agenda for tomorrow night. Hey, I do have a majority of our principals here. If there are any questions, I do have Mr. Hutchinson here from the high school. Any questions for Mr. Hutchinson? Would you like to share out?
No, the, just a, the high school got awarded the PA Smart Grant, which is thirty-five thousand for computer science. And also, I met with the Students for Change, the group that came, I think, last year for the survey. They would like to put out another survey, and I told them, excuse me, it's very similar to the one from last year, just about interested in likes, but I told them that I would discuss it before first and make you all aware if that was okay.
Yeah, also along the lines, and this is the high school, would include the rest of the district, is that, you know, we had applied for the PCCD grant, where it's a safety grant. We were awarded some money last year when we applied for part A. And we're kind of on that. We thought it would be, instead of applying for this grant and getting close for a service that we wanted done in regards to school safety, we felt that it would be, we'd get a bigger bag before our buck if we wrote the grant for the equipment so we can have our people do, do this stuff in-house with covering ground floor windows and things of that nature. So, the people from PCCD grant, they indicated to us that they would prefer that we redo the grant, and it be done as a service, or a company would come in and do the work. So, that kind of put us on hold, so we are doing what they asked, and we don't have an answer because we're going to be awarded any grant money for the PCCD grant and the school safety and security of it. So, anything to add, Mr. Hutchinson, to that?
Yeah.
And maybe to the safety, I can kind of elaborate in the executive session on it. You know, we are good, talking to the executive session comes to school safety and kind of tell you part man and what we thought and kind of what we're at, so.
I do have one question, long related to the grant. There was a lot of chatter, and a couple of people reached out to me about an issue with the students that park, that they were waiting in line, and that because there's no back scanner, that there was an issue down there, and what has been status quo all year, that there was all of a sudden, teachers walk everybody out, they want them in the room, and there was a big, a big deal.
Yeah, there was a misunderstanding that was unbeknownst to me until, obviously, it came to me. We have a number of students, and now it's started to grow in the student parking lot. Matter of fact, I just spoke to all student drivers this morning. The bell starts at seven twenty. Those students coming up, you know, depending on when they come up, what they do, we're running into them coming in late. So, we met with them, I met with them, the administration met with them today and told them, you know, you gotta come in a little earlier. Yesterday, or today, I went down there, a lot of them are there, seven oh five, some had their trunks open, hoods up. So, we just said, hey, get in here in a timely manner, and seven twenty would be the time that it starts. What happened was a misunderstanding. Obviously, it was, I think, supposed to be good intentions of saying, hey, here's where it is, it's seven twenty. However, it didn't go over so well. And it didn't help that it was raining that day. It'd be different if it was eighty. Not that it's right or wrong. However, we met with them to make sure everybody was on the same page, and then I'm going to meet with the staff. Because I was receiving calls, if you're driving your sibling, the sibling was getting marked tardy, and the other one wasn't. So, one had eleven tardies, and the other one had zero. So, we had to be consistent, and that's where it was. I also think, day one oh five, it's a little different. You know, you gotta approach it a little different way, rather than locking them out. They weren't locked out, I assure you that, but they were, some weren't marked tardy.
Is it, so, let me ask you, are there kids that are there timely, but because we can't get them through the door quick enough, that they're late? So, that they're seven fifteen, that you can't get them through security with?
No, I started looking at it, coming through the back scanner is okay. It comes in rows, and it depends. I can't say, yeah, every day. It's a steady flow. It is a steady flow. However, some days are busier than others. Usually, when that happens, and we do have a backup, it's made an announcement of, hey, teachers home off your attendance, we have, you know, some students still coming in. The issue or the concern we were trying to address is they're there. However, to get out of your car, to putz around, and it's not everybody. Some of those kids are probably caught in the midst of the other ones sitting down there. To come in in a timely manner and get into building, and a reminder that class does start at seven twenty. So, I don't think so. I think our procedure's working. I don't think that's it. However, I'll continue to look at it, but I do think we get them in on a timely manner. The other thing that we discussed is the teachers don't start till seven oh five. Prior, the back scanners and things, we had, we were letting them in early at their bottom line. However, nobody on duty. So, we tried to bring them in, put them in that corridor. However, without somebody overseeing them and having thirty in there, they can get out around the building, which the teachers aren't due until seven oh five. So, I will speak to the teachers tomorrow, but I think, for the most part, it was a misunderstanding. Could've been handled better, and obviously, as a principal, it's on me, and I'll take responsibility for that.
I have another question for you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Yep.
Do we keep any log, or do you keep any log in your, in your building concerning vandalism or property damage?
Yes. When you say property damage...
Like someone tearing a toilet off the wall?
Yes, yes.
Removing faucets, multiple faucets?
Yes. If we can figure out who that is, then it's referred to, to...
Okay. I mean, this one, I'm told that you've replaced three, three automatic faucets. Those aren't something you go buy a hose for twenty-five dollars.
Right.
They're like three hundred dollars a piece. And what student has time to rip a toilet off of the floor?
I agree. You'd be surprised. We had, we've had some concerns with that bathroom down by Chief Bilecki's office.
I was gonna say, it's adjacent to the security office.
Correct, correct.
They say if you want to commit a crime, commit it next to the police.
Correct. But we, we have, we have also, that put people going through there. We only have one male down in that hallway to kind of go in and out, but also, we told security also to make their rounds as well as the hall monitors to get in there.
Those little, those little amounts are taken?
They add up, absolutely, absolutely.
Aren't there cameras? Aren't there cameras?
No, not in the...
No, not in the restroom, outside, not.
But outside, the hall there should be.
There, there are.
I just wondered how they'll handle the toilet. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dillo and Mr. Wilson will both be here tomorrow night and out here this evening. Do you have any questions for the middle schools? Mike and Amanda, maybe you have an answer for you. Are there any questions in regards to the middle schools? Mrs. Baker will also be here tomorrow night. Any questions in regards to A.L. Wilson? Dr. Witt is here for PAMA. Any questions or anything to share out, why the Dr. Witt? Any questions? Mason Town, Mr. Fusco? Anything to share out, Mr. Fusco?
I don't have a special education, I can't, if you want me to go now.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay. So, just to report out, you know, we have a death and blind census reporting coming up. Have met with some teachers about E.S.Y., the Armstrong target group, so I'm making sure that we're meeting that criteria and addressing extended score with this, that group of students that we have in our school district. Asset testing, our testing window actually starts next week and goes through April. So, that's, we're kind of getting that ramped up. Rather new, they actually used the videotape by students scoring years ago at the state level, but now they get a bit away with the video officer, or the video, you know, the assessment, I guess the validity is, the validity is much better now that they're trusting the school districts with the results that are coming in. So, get away with that. So, we have a new way across the door, and I did talk to Mr. Bowlen about doing a digital or semi-digital type of administration report to make it a little more smooth. I've also reached out to some other districts to see how they're handling it as well, just to see, to make sure that we're all on the same page going in. E.S.Y., starting to plan that as well, as, as we're also looking at that target group, we're planning it for Mason Town. It'll be roughly around the same time, so that'd be about the third week in June, you know, one through four-week sessions through July. Also met with early intervention parents and agencies that had those meetings about two weeks ago. Helps me forecast a little bit what's coming up through kindergarten. Also, the last thing I wanted to address is the possibility, and I'll be honest, I've never had to ask for a teacher, but I'm thinking we might need to look into maybe a halftime position, make the friendship bill as well as Plabla for learning support. I do have some data here that I could share with you guys, and I will say that I thought I corrected it, but I had a couple mistakes I had to make sure I fixed on the one chart. But really, what we're looking at is we have, we had a high referral, it seems like, at Plabla in terms of K through three, in terms of our caseloads. Our caseload is now up to thirty-two with one teacher. So, I think that's rather high. I wouldn't ask anything of a teacher that I wouldn't ask to do myself. And I think that's quite a lot, that age group. And those are the most important years to me, is those early years, fixing those gaps and closing those. At Friendship Bill, we have a higher group that's in that third, fourth, and fifth grade group, and I think that would be a nice offset, that people can go and work with those primary kids and help offset some of the other, at the other place. Two caseloads on, on teachers that are thirty-two and one at twenty-seven. I also looked at the under review, which is a category, an IPU for us in our system, our database reviews. And under review is basically, we have seventy-nine students at this time under review. So, I mean, that's forecasted for the remainder of the year. Now, I will say that at Plabla, doesn't seem like I have any in that area where I have the higher caseload. Would that be affected by the under review? There's not anybody that's going to be evaluated at that time in the near future that I know of, or that we're aware of. Now, on the other hand, we have some in some other areas, but it's, it's, that spread, that's spread across all schools, all elementary, all middle schools, and all high schools. So, we have seventy-nine students there that will be evaluated from now until the end of the year. And that doesn't mean that there won't be others that move into the district, or will be requested evaluation, or go through that process throughout the school year. But it's easily followed a little bit. There's some good things. I did, years ago, I used to do, I pulled my data from when we did like, when we had the last audit, we had a disproportionality corrective action. So, we had to look at our, our numbers and try to make them come up with a plan, obviously, to see how our numbers look. In specific disability categories, you know, they want us to be closer to the state levels, which is very hard in some respects, and we have to look at our demographics and everything else that we deal with. But I will say, there's been a lot of strides, and I can, we came from that, you know, we've had a decrease in some areas, which is a good decrease, almost three and a half percent, which is a lot closer to state level. But I'll share these with you. And then this also has buildings, how many, I guess, breakdown by grade, how many IPs, first, you know, per glass and such, and that might be able to help you with, you know, some decisions that you may have, adding maybe another feature.
Any questions for Mr. Fusco?
I don't have a question come to, but I heard really, with things about Mr. Fusco's special education director, how he's communicating with all the teachers, making improvements in the paperwork, so there's lots of paper, more and more electronic, and I think that's great.
Yeah, we try to go a little more electronic. That's a good point. I know that we've got Chromebooks, we're trying to eliminate the paper costs and such. They added new features, every year they add new features, IP writer. IP writer has uploaded documents, so theoretically, when the meeting's over, we, we offset everything that's written, have the document signed, and we can upload it from our scanner. Basically, our poppers scan it to your email, then they upload it through the system. So, we don't have to send stuff over to the business office all the time, I can go around the system and go. So, we're currently changing that up a little bit. I know it's a learning curve for some. Some are more tech savvy than others, but it's, it's getting there. It's saving paper, and we're not, we're not making nine copies of IPs. You know, some IPs can get anywhere ranging from thirty to, I've seen some eighty-five pages. So, I mean, it needs to be pretty lengthy, so, and that's a lot of paper. You can use a whole ream of paper on a meeting or something, so, I'm trying to eliminate some of that stuff a little bit, and make it a little more streamlined, more efficient. But I won't, I don't have anything else to add, but I will give you that if I have. Then I have to go.
Mrs. Brody, Smithfield, any questions for Mrs. Brody or Mrs. Brody you need to share out?
You guys are worried about the square foot of the insulation on the roof? I don't understand it, but I don't know.
I'm not worried now that I didn't...
It's five dollars a square foot, we get like five hundred bucks on Rice Krispie Treats, so, you know, we're, we're really quick, so we can, we can help you out on the stand if you're really worried about the extra cost.
No, I was just, I didn't know how much there was.
Oh, no, that was just everybody, we just wanted to make sure that you guys were willing to do that, we're willing to step up.
Oh, well, that's fine.
If you wanted to do it beforehand and know what you're looking at, numbers.
If you don't have the drain falls, we're certainly leaving you out.
Mrs. Beazak will be here tomorrow night as well, she's out of town, and so she will be here tomorrow night with any questions you may have for her, the elementary, federal funding group. Did I skip any principals? What I would, what I would like to do, maybe quarterly, at least three times a year throughout the school year, is start having like an education committee meeting, basically with all the building principals and central office administrators, where we would start that on five o'clock on work session nights. So, we can, you know, maybe have our principals give information out on, you know, the, like the state of the union address, the state of the district address, you know, what's happening in their school during this timeframe over the next three months, you know, and that would be a committee as a whole, board members. If you do not want to attend that, you don't have to, but it's open to all board members. Now, we've, I know we've done that in the past a couple of times. But I would like to start having those more frequently, at least quarterly, throughout the year to, you know, discuss education, what's happening in our schools. You know, would the board, any, would the board be in agreement with that? Would we oppose to that?
No, I think it's very, what I'm starting to worry, it seemed like that we went around and each, each principal gave a little two cents or more to them all along, and I just am fearful now that they're, it seems like there's hesitation to speak up. So, by doing something like that, we get more interaction between the principals and the teachers and the board, and I would also like, even hope that teachers would be able to participate in that.
Oh, yeah. We would, you know, whenever we would do that, I would put that as part of the advertisement and paper for the board meeting, that there would be an education committee meeting, you know, to discuss, you know, I call it refer to the state of the union address, but the state of the district address three times a year during the school year, maybe once in the summer or possibly. So, would the board be agreeing that we can start doing that as soon as next month in March?
Is that in addition to the following two sessions?
That would be in addition. They've become five, and if there were different questions, we could do that as well during the work session, or, sorry, during that time, and if there was anything additional, it would be addressed in the work sessions. Okay? So, I'll, I'll plan on start, I'll meet with my administration, prepare, you know, something for March in regards to what's happening in their schools, and kind of share out with the public and what, you know, with the board, okay?
Will you be including the members of the community, maybe, sort of industry leaders?
That's why we would, we would open it up and advertise, if they're interested in attending, they certainly may, you know, this board will find what works, and we should share out, and, you know, what's happening in the school, what's in the near future, what they're planning for, what's coming up, you know, kind of looks on those things. Okay, Mr. Dupont, athletics.
Yeah, I wonder if you guys seen the paper the other day, but we had another young student athlete that signed a national letter intent to attend Youngstown State University. Her name's J.L. Dankle. She's a two-time WPIO swimmer. She's a place winner for us, she swims in the Boar Islands at the meets in there. She's an outstanding student. I expect her to do very well at Youngstown State. We do have whipwheels coming up, I think, next week for swimming. Sections are this week for wrestling, and then the WPIO tournament will be next Friday and Saturday, not extremely, at High School. Basketball just finished up, we're getting a great start here with the spring sports, March second, just right around the corner, weather permitting. We're still gonna, we'll be indoors, I assume, for a little while. And then also, I do have some fall coaching hours I'd like to discuss with you in the executive session.
Any questions for Mr. Dupont? Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Mr. Golden, food service.
Thank you, Mr. Black. We did receive a letter from the state for our review, we received it this year, that we, they will review paperwork from March, and then the onsite visit will take place towards the end of May, mid-May. So, currently, we're working to make sure we have all of our i's, t's crossed for that review. Spoke with Mrs. Beazak, we're working together for our elementary schools, March, first week of March, it's National School Breakfast Week. We'll be doing promotion there to try to increase participation for breakfast, along with doing another type of promotion at our secondary model schools. So, we're looking forward to that. Summer feeding, I did meet today with Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. They're very instrumental in getting us signed, helping us advertise and promoting the summer feeding program. First intention was Mason Town and Smithfield, with the possibility of a roofing project this summer, we're going to go ahead and plan with Mason Town and probably A.L. Speaking with the folks from the Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, they're working with Point Marion to try to see throughout the community, how many programs there are that would be interested in those for the summer. So, was that a good workout, transportation with those centers? And there is a possibility that they may, they may have a site at South. It would be an open site, but it would also take care of those mills at Point Marion. So, we're, we're looking forward to pushing this participation numbers up for this summer, and we're on board to market it a little better and make it more accessible.
Any questions for Troy? Thank you, Mr. Golden. Mr. Bowlen, technology.
Good evening, everyone. Just have, just wanted to note that Nathan is in his second week now. He's, we've been working with him, getting him acclimated, getting him around to the buildings. He's doing very well. I think he's going to be a, a great fit for us. We're just kind of getting ready, as the school year winds down, getting ready for graduation, Chromebook collections, and getting ready for lining up the summer projects. That's all I have, other than when Mr. Belzik speaks about one of the agenda items, I will be chiming in on that as well.
Any questions for Mr. Bowlen? Thank you, Chris. Transportation, Mr. Parney.
I don't have any updates for the open session, but I do have enough on personnel matter for a second.
Any questions for Mr. Parney? Thank you, Bill. Chief Bilecki is not here this evening, obviously, I'll give you an update in the executive session, but I do have Mr. Depp here, and filling in for chief. And I currently have Mr. Depp going to the high school this week, kind of shuffling some things away. But we do have our assessments that is due to take place next week. I can talk more on that in the executive session. So, Chuck, make sure you stick around for a few minutes for executive session.
Sure.
Okay? Any questions on school, safety, or security for me, Mr. Hutchinson, or Mr. Depp at this time? Okay, Mr. Belzik?
Yes, I have several items I'd like to review with the board and bring to their attention. The first one is the bond refinancing with additional funds. The current market is very respectable in refinancing some of the bonds we have in two thousand and ten, and that would work in conjunction with us doing the Smithfield project and other projects that we discussed last month, that we, we need to start looking at, the other DHVAC system, the parking lots, stage curtains at the south building, and some different floors and things like that, and there's another project. But what I'm going to ask the board is if we can approve, put on the agenda for Wednesday's meeting, a resolution whereby they would approve our bond council and managing tender writer to look into financing and setting a amount that we can borrow. We don't have all these projects and numbers for these projects yet, but this will allow us to begin the process, because it does take a little bit of time to complete all this, and our managing underwriter sent me a timeframe that actually, if we were to have this resolution approved tomorrow, and the rest of the resolutions with maybe a not-to-exceed resolution approved in March, we could have a bond closing in May, so that would be work, we would have our capital funds there to pay for the roof, which we want to do this year. This is the resolution I had sent to Liam Ross today, and if the board would choose that way, we could set our managing bond council and investment.
So, just two clarifications, it doesn't obligate us to do anything?
Correct.
And it doesn't, it's already a tell, it's a process?
Right. But just for us to get moving with the process, so they can start moving the market and see what's best for us right now.
What's, what's the process for, is that any specific individual or entity that acts as bond council?
Yes, it does, the Pittsburgh Shore.
I'm sorry?
Pittsburgh Shore.
And is that what we've used traditionally?
Yes.
Okay. So, there was no process that's like, which is this is who we use, who could use the best?
Right. A lot of districts like to stay with the same bond council and managing underwriter, because when you get into refinancing and reworking those numbers, you can't really borrow money for another building to do a similar type project until that money has all paid off. So, they, they would know the entry details, they're all the contract, and whether, they started back in the nineties, two thou, early two thousands, whatever, and when you refinance and that they come through, they have a little bit more experience and knowing what the district did. I think that's why a lot of districts stay with the same bond council managing underwriter.
So, even though there's no upfront cost, in the end, are they even making ten thousand dollars, the bond council?
I mean, obviously, the rate would depend on the size of the project and whatever. Usually, prior bond council, they'll have some familiarity with the structure of the debt, but certainly, if it's what the board wants, you could have, it's called rounding down a couple of... call around, you know, a couple of, a couple of, uh, offerings that do financing, municipal financing, just to get some, a couple of quotes as far as what their rates are.
Is that sort of a, sort of a kind of process?
I mean, it, it means to look at a little bit, but if you want, certainly, we could make a couple of calls, you know, really feel better.
Is that something you need to do for tonight, I don't want to ask if it's possible?
I, I, I can attempt and see what I, kind of response I can get. Are they using any of those? I, I think most of them are. Probably where you might get the most.
Vince had mentioned another resolution ought to exceed and, you know, Vince and I sat in bed with our maintenance, uh, on a few occasions, looking at projects and things that need done, you know, so if we're gonna do a bond and refinance and take money for projects, our thoughts are, look at everything from A to Z throughout the district and what can, what needs done in the next three years, because I believe you have three years to spend that money for your capital projects, so, I mean, we have quite an extensive list of things that are in need, there's a lot of wish, just, I mean, it's really needs we're looking at, roofs, we've had, you know, um, some companies coming out looking at roofs, giving us an idea of like the placement plan, um, or roofs that might be a candidate for restoration versus the roof. We've looked at all the parking lots, I met with, uh, K2 and Jim Todeck yesterday briefly and we've, they actually toured the district, I was in, uh, calling them at the high school. There's extensive work to be done throughout the entire district, the parking lots, um, some major work, some of them are in very poor condition, indeed, or even better than we've done, gym floors and low school floors, curtains, other work on borders and H.V.A.C. throughout the district, that's kind of scratching the surface, I think for a couple of years, now the, the track outside is needed. Uh, but is that like the restoration, the way on the track that...
I, I would have to get somebody to come in and do an estimate, I'm one hundred percent sure, I know the lines are fading at a vigorous pace right now, it's, uh, it's fifteen, sixteen years old and hasn't been updated.
I mean, I thought we had an estimate when we had the field again.
Yeah, but that was for, I think that was for like a whole track restoration, I, I don't think we need that.
We don't need that.
I, I'd like to get maybe a couple of people to come in and give you an idea of what it costs, just so that you have the ballpark.
Oh, we know, random, some of those could be a priority, because it was just a few months ago, because we don't have any money to do with this, so now let's do all this other night, so is, is the intent, is some of those to be a priority?
Oh, that's, yeah, I mean, I'm...
We still have that.
That's kind of why we, you know, on this route, but if we're gonna, if, if, if our district's going to restructure a bond and take up money and then in three or four years...